Hello and welcome to another edition of Coffee with Comrades, a podcast discussing current events, theory, and action through a radical lens. What's up y'all? Pearson here, coming at you with another edition of Coffee with Comrades. Today, I'm sharing an interview I did with my homie, Stephen, who's running for city council in Minneapolis. Stephen and I chat about the George Floyd uprising, the abolitionist struggle in the city, Stephen's platform in politics, and I also ask him some tough questions from the left about political struggle and the limitations of the ballot box. Regardless of where you come down on the question of electoralism, we at Coffee with Comrades have always embraced a diversity of tactics. I hope you'll enjoy this dialogue as much as Stephen and I did. But before we get to the discussion, check out this jingle from some of our pals on the Channel Zero Network.
Silver Threads, Still Walking, Still Waking is co-hosted by me, Carla Bergman.
And me, Eleanor Goldfield. This is where we interview long-term organizers and radicals about their watershed moments, what they've learned along the way, and how they maintain their hope on this path. Dreaming and building emergent worlds for a present and future anchored in justice and freedom for all.
Because there are forks in the road, but they all lead us home to the fight, to the build.
As always, I want to give a big shout out to the folks at the CZN and our affiliates at the Rev Left Radio Federation. Coffee with Comrades is a program run by workers for workers. If you fuck with this podcast, please consider signing up to become a monthly sustainer of the show by going to www.patreon.com/coffeewithcomrades. Dozens of listeners, just like you, are chipping in just a dollar a month to keep this independent media project afloat. If they can do it, you can too. Doing the show has been a absolute joy, and I am so genuinely grateful for all the phenomenal human beings who continue to support this program financially, month after month after month. If you're not in a position right now to donate to the show, but still want to help Coffee with Comrades grow, then good news. Most listeners come to the show because a friend or a comrade recommended us. So if you dig this show, tell your pals. You can follow us on social media and retweet or share episode announcements. And if you're really feeling generous, you can leave us a review on Apple Podcasts or wherever you go to listen to your favorite leftist propaganda. At any rate, I'll shut up now. Please enjoy today's episode of Coffee with Comrades. Stephen for Ward 10. Hey, I wanted to ask you, how did Monday go? How was the, what were the protests been like in Minneapolis now that things have been really kicking off with the Derek Chauvin trial?
Yeah, Monday was a lot. I don't know how closely you've been following the buildup to it, but the city spent, I think, almost $30 million with preparing for just the jury selection.
Jesus.
So they really have the courthouse, the Hennepin County courthouse, being like a fortress, you know?
Right.
And they have three layers of fencing with barbed wire and everything. They have tons of cops from all over the state. They preemptively activated the National Guard a while ago and everything. So heavy militarized, heavy police presence, cameras everywhere. And yeah, so Monday, you know, everyone was really nervous because they had a thing called, you know, the cage is what we were calling it, because it was really their protest, freedom of speech zone, you know? So none of us really went in it that were there on Monday, and we all refused to do it.
Of course, it's a trap.
It was, yeah. It was like, we're walking into a pre-kettle, so we didn't want to do that.
Right, exactly.
And, you know, there's a number of groups outside there. And, you know, I organized with this group, Visual Black Justice, and Memorialize the Movement. They're black women-led orgs that were doing a theatrical, you know, presentation. It's really powerful imagery and everything. It was really cool. And we made a lot of statements, you know, we had mirrors out there, big ones that said, "Reflect." We had Memorialize the Movement brought some plywood protest art that's been popping up throughout the cities, you know, and they've collected almost 800 pieces. So these orgs were really cool, and they really created some powerful imagery and statements that day. We were out there from like 4:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
It's a long day, dude. That's a long day.
Very emotional day, you know, and we were there to support the family while they came in. They only allowed the sister of George Floyd to come through. And, you know, we were there holding signs of support for her as she came in, you know, telling the potential jurors to, you know, reflect on themselves with the mirrors and everything and messages on there. Of course, anti-police sentiment as well. And, you know, there's hundreds and hundreds of people outside downtown, outside the courthouse. So it was a long day, an emotional day, very draining physically, mentally, and emotionally. But overall, you know, we started off this long process, you know, trying to start off strong and let the state know that, you know, we're ready, we're resilient, and we're strong.
Oh yeah, that's awesome. Yeah, and it's been really encouraging seeing not just like the way Minneapolis has responded, but like also all the solidarity demos that happened on Monday all across the states and internationally as well. It's really, really encouraging to see, you know, it's a shame and a tragedy that that's what it takes sometimes to make international solidarity a thing. But it is beautiful to see nonetheless.
Yeah, yeah, it's really great seeing all the support, yeah, internationally and throughout the states. It's really encouraging to know that people are paying attention and they care about this, and they care about the people here. But, you know, we're going through the state's justice system. And, you know, to talk a little bit about the jury selection, you know, it's hard to find a person who is not either pro or against cops, you know, so...
Right, it's a pretty polarizing issue right now.
Right, so I don't know who's gonna be on this jury, but I'm not imagining there will be justice served in any sense, you know, state or anything. So we'll see how this summer goes.
Yeah, sadly, if history is any indication, that is tragically the trajectory that we find ourselves on. Well, I imagine we're gonna talk more about the George Floyd uprising and the trial of Derek Chauvin in the minutes ahead, but for now, I want to formally welcome Stephen onto the program. I'm really glad that I can have you on here. It's good to catch up with you. It's been a hot minute. I think the last time you and I actually hung out was at a Stick Your Guns concert, ironically enough.
Yeah, that was a good show. It was actually the last one I've been to since COVID hit, so...
Oh wow, really?
I miss live music, for sure.
Dude, me too, me too. It is, it's something that I think about all the time. Well, listen, Stephen, let's talk a little bit about your background. How did you grow up and what got you interested in politics?
Yeah, so I actually grew up in rural Minnesota. And, you know, I grew up in a right-wing family, evangelical Christian family. And, you know, I kind of rejected all of that for the most part and started moving further and further left. I'll admit, I voted Obama in 2012. And I got caught on to the Bernie Sanders campaign in 2016, and from there, you know, I kind of saw the futility of, you know, electoral politics, ironically. And I kind of started getting involved with local grassroots organizations when I moved down to Jacksonville, Florida for work. And, you know, I'd spend a lot of time with the Food Not Bombs down there, you know, feeding unhoused people and providing free stores, the local iWalk, the local DSA, you know, doing anti-war protests. And, you know, as well as the Socialist Rifle Association, and I think that's how you and I got connected.
It sure is, yep. At range days that we were coordinating between Jacksonville SRA and Tallahassee SRA, just general northeastern part of the SRA. It was a good time. Yeah, and now, speaking of which, you're running for office up in Minneapolis, is that right?
Yeah, so, yeah, like I said ironically, I am now trying to run for local office, Minneapolis City Council in Ward 10.
So tell me, how did you make that decision?
So, yeah, I moved back to Minneapolis at the beginning of 2020, right before, you know, the pandemic lockdown and the murder of George Floyd. And I, you know, spent the summer protesting, working with local distribution centers, you know, working to preserve plywood protest art with Memorialize the Movement. And, you know, I saw the city council of Minneapolis, you know, a pretty progressive city council, say they're gonna dismantle the police, and it really inspired me, you know? I thought, okay, if we can enact this change on a city level, because there's only 13 city councilors and nine of them said that they would do it, you know, this is actually really possible to make tangible change on the city level, you know? And granted, we're still within the imperialist capitalist state that is America, but you know what, if we can start making small progressive changes on the local level, that would be great. And throughout the summer, you know, we saw, summer and fall, we saw the city council kind of back down, you know, say, "Well, I didn't mean dismantle, I meant this," you know, or whatever.
When I said dismantle, I didn't actually mean dismantle.
Right, doing what politicians do. And also, they weren't considering the obstacles in the way of actually abolishing the police. So, you know, my city councillor, she decided not to run again, so it was an open seat. And I thought, okay, well, I don't really necessarily need to get into the city council, but if I can start promoting policies that I want to see done, and tangible things to help out poor and working-class people in the city of Minneapolis, I'm gonna try to bring that conversation to the left. So I really tried to just step up and speak out about these things and see if I can do any change.
That's awesome. So tell me, if you had to give an elevator pitch for your platform, which I'm sure you have to do all the time now that you're canvassing, what would you say?
So the main five reasons I decided to run were, you know, working towards abolishing the police. And, you know, with that, it's gonna be a long process. And I can talk about the number of barriers that there are in Minnesota, specifically in Minneapolis, later. But, you know, I want to start off with defunding, demilitarizing, and holding them accountable with, you know, reversing Leo Boer or putting in a civilian police accountability council. I want to immediately increase minimum wage to $25 an hour, eliminate cash bail, because, you know, I am an abolitionist, but also it's a classist system. And I currently work in mass transit, so I want to provide a no-fair-transit system and expand the services, and then cap annual rent increases to about 3%. So I want to, I'm running on this platform and being very specific about what I'm running for, so that if I got into office and I didn't do any of these things, you know, people would say, "Hey, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about what you said. You said $25 an hour by 2023." You know, so that it's a good way to hold myself accountable, but also set the precedent for other elected officials on the local level.
How have folks in the city responded to this message as you've been going around canvassing, talking with people? You know, you've spoken here briefly about like trying to, you know, elicit or inspire a larger, like, leftward conversation. Are you seeing that happen generally? Do you feel like this campaign has played a role in that? How do people kind of, how do people react when you knock on their door and say, "Hi, my name is Stephen, and I'm running for city council, because I would like to abolish the police?"
So the thing about me running a campaign that's so straightforward is it elicits a lot of reactions, both positive and negative. You know, I have some reactionary liberals and Republicans that have slammed the door in my face. I've had some people, you know, harass my social media accounts and troll me and this and that. So, you know, people don't like the fact that I'm an abolitionist, that I'm pushing for a way higher minimum wage than they're talking about on the national level and these other radical socialist platforms that I have. So a lot of negative stuff, but also it's really setting myself apart with, you know, other leftists and other, you know, progressive people in the city or other people who are ready to have these conversations about how to uplift the working class. So I'm getting a lot of really strong support and a lot of other people running for city council who are saying, "Hey, I really appreciate you running on this platform or that platform and policy, because this needs to be said, but, you know, you're a white cis man, so you can, you know, kind of break this a little easier in Minnesota, because it is a majority-white state."
Well, I know Minnesota has been a state that has long fought against police brutality, and clearly that's a huge part of the platform that you're bringing to the fore. And I think one can trace a through line from the murder of Philando Castile to the murder of George Floyd and the sort of antagonisms that the police have created in the city of Minneapolis in particular. But just kind of the general, I guess, lack of concern that Minnesota has shown for police accountability. And so I'm curious to hear how people on the ground engage with the politics since the historic uprising this past summer have begun to rethink local politics, like on the local level? Like, how has the city of Minneapolis changed from last summer, when these uprisings first kicked off, to this moment where we're at here in March now, in many ways commemorating the year of the pandemic? What has changed as far as how people at a local level in Minneapolis engage with politics?
That's a very good question, and it's something that I'm still working on analyzing. But my initial, what I've seen initially is people are either moving further to the right or further to the left, you know?
Like polarizing?
Quite polarizing, yeah. So even before the end of the year, Minneapolis Police murdered another young, you know, Somali man, Dilal Eid. And, you know, it's just something that continues to happen. And the people who are able to see that it is an unjust system that will never be able to be fixed except by dismantling it completely, they're looking for alternatives. They're creating these conversations, you know, about how we get there, you know, the process and what replaces it. Because a lot of people have been saying, you know, "Oh, we'll have those conversations about dismantling the police and, you know, what replaces it for public safety and this and that." But no one was really having those conversations in the summer and, you know, in the fall. And now people are really diving deep into what a new system of public safety without the police would look like, you know? And then on the opposite end, you have a lot of reactionary people who are really clutching their pearls, you know? I mean, I'm sure you're aware crime is up a little bit throughout the United States, but that's mostly due to, you know, economic hardship and the pandemic and people being forlode or losing their job or, you know, all these things that are happening in this decaying empire. But people in Minneapolis are thinking it's special to Minneapolis because we, you know, mentioned that we wanted to dismantle the police department. And we have 200 less cops in Minneapolis because a lot of them quit, you know, throughout the summer, which I would say is a good thing.
You'll love to see it.
But...
Frankly, we love to see it, folks. Things we love to see.
Exactly. So with a smaller police force, you know, it's, it really have, we haven't seen too much of a difference, you know? I mean, the crimes that are being committed are, you know, quote crimes, are economic desperation, you know? And if we can just reallocate those police budget funds to other means, I think we can really help people out and work through this weird time where we're trying to work towards dismantling them and abolishing the police. So it's been a really weird time, but I think a lot of good conversations are happening. You know, a lot of people are showing where they stand.
100%. You mentioned earlier that there are a lot of specific obstacles to this project of defunding and eventually abolishing the police and reinvesting that money into the community. What are some of the particular ways in which the status quo has entrenched itself? And who are the people invested in the status quo in Minneapolis? And then I guess on top of that, like, what exactly does that look like? Because you said you guys have been on a local level kind of grappling with what it means, right, to abolish the police? And I'm thinking about like, you know, the work of like Mariam Kaba, for example, thinking about like how abolition isn't an absence, it's a presence, right? It's, you know, people being more taken care of and more protected. And so I'm just kind of curious, like, what are those conversations looking like? And who are the people who are putting obstacles in the path towards a radical transformation of public safety in the city of Minneapolis?
I definitely think there are some city councilors who have backed down and, you know, like I said earlier, kind of changed what dismantle meant to them. But on top of all of that, we have, and I'm not super familiar with electoral politics, I don't know what it's like in other cities, but in Minneapolis, we have a thing called the Charter Commission. And, you know, the way to change the city charter, so like the city rules, is, you know, we need to go through the Charter Commission. And to abolish the police, you know, we need to, one, have a majority, a supermajority, so nine out of the 13 city councilors, you know, approve and vote for, you know, this abolishing the police. But then also, there's this thing called the Charter Commission. So Minneapolis is in Hennepin County, and the county judge, I forget the specific, I think it's the chief judge, appoints 15 people to be in the Charter Commission. Most of them are attorneys, most of them are liberals and everything. So even if we get, you know, 13 city councilors that are all socialists or, you know, leftists, the Charter Commission still stands in the way, and it's a non-elected body that stands in the way. So in order to get rid of the Charter Commission, you have to overturn it at the state level, actually. So it's a whole big obstacle that the state has created to protect itself and keep the status quo. So that's kind of why I'm saying I want to work towards abolishing the police and why I'm being very specific with that conversation with other people. Yes, I am an abolitionist, but it's something we need to work for. So things that the city council can do, yeah, is defunding the police and working on holding them accountable and, you know, demilitarizing as well. So all those things are super important, and, you know, everyone seems open to increasing funding for emergency medical services, social workers, you know, making schools better, helping infrastructure and all sorts of stuff.
It also occurs to me that like, those are real practical material things that you as a city councilperson could achieve, right? Like, there's a difference between having, right, like, campaign goals or inspiring conversations and like actual material change that will benefit people directly and meaningfully and immediately. And I think that it's helpful to draw the demarcations between those things, because I think a lot of times when people are campaigning for office, they're not as forthright about that, right? Like, they'll put their pie in the sky kind of promises, but then they don't point to the systemic ways in which those things are not actually possible right now, right? And so I appreciate that about your approach, and I think that the forthrightness is a really attractive quality of kind of how you've structured this campaign. I know that another cornerstone of your platform is also renter protections. So what exactly are you proposing for the city of Minneapolis?
So more than half of Minneapolis is made up of renters, you know? In my words specifically, it's over 70% to 80% of us are renters over here. So we really need a lot more protections. I, for instance, I had a rent increase from $1,250 to $1,850 in one year.
Holy fuck.
Yeah, so I'm proposing, you know, polling from Bernie Sanders, actually, that 3% annual cap, the cap on annual rent increases, you know, so leaving it at 3%. There's also, you know, a group, Minneapolis for Rent Control, that is proposing the same thing. So that's actually something that's very tangible that we might see here. I'm also in favor of starting to transition towards income-based rent throughout the city. And, you know, we kind of phase into that by, you know, making it so that new construction apartment complexes have 20% of their units for income-based housing. And I want to be very specific and say that income-based housing includes those who have no income, you know, so people who might be unhoused or without a job as well. You know, everyone deserves housing. It's a human right as well. So starting to transition into that and slowly increase it so that more and more people are not paying 50% of their income to their rent, you know? And I'm also big into cooperative living as well. So there's a few apartment co-ops here in Minneapolis, and they're really cool, you know? And making it a requirement if a landlord is selling an apartment complex, allowing the tenants the first right to purchase the building. And at the city level, we can assist with that by offering grants or loans to the people who don't want to do that, so that they can, you know, own their own housing situation and not be stuck under a landlord's thumb.
They've done stuff like that in New York City, which is really cool. It's a fascinating kind of intersection of like squatting, like tenants' rights and like land and property. It's a very interesting kind of vector. I hadn't heard about that being a thing in Minneapolis, but it's a cool initiative that you're proposing there. That's really rad.
Another approach too is, I think the city council can provide like tax incentives and tax abatement. They do it all the time with businesses, you know, saying, "Oh, if you move your business here, you don't have to pay taxes for 10 years." Well, we can do the same thing with these cooperative, you know, businesses or these cooperative apartment complexes. So helping take the strain off these people, so they can, you know, start making people own the places that they live in, you know?
And I understand you're a proponent of doing that at a business level as well, right? With local co-ops, where it's not just folks owning their homes, but also folks owning their workplace and getting to make a more cooperative, directly democratic kind of decisions about what's done at their workplace. Is that correct?
Yeah, definitely. I do support the democratic ownership of the means of production. So it just makes everything more equitable, you know, not having the stakeholders, this board of directors and everything, just having the people who work there actually be the owners of the building. So, yeah, like I said, with the housing co-ops, you can translate this stuff over to those areas as well for businesses.
So like giving grants for people wanting to buy out the, like, buy out their boss, that sort of thing?
You know, I've asked some people about transitioning... You know, I, I've asked some people about transitioning uh already existing business into a cooperative. And I think that's a lot more difficult than just starting one from the ground up. But I mean, we, we in Minnesota and Minneapolis specifically have a ton of international businesses here. Like I think Dairy Queen has their own headquarters here, Best Buy, Target. Um so all these major corporations are here and, you know, I, I mean, I, I don't really need to explain to you. How these um, these corporations are damaging the planet, but also, you know, local economies and, you know, local workers' rights. So to kind of get us away from all of those would be something that I'm, I want to work towards.
That's awesome. Well, right now there is an ongoing fight at the national level for a fifteen-hour wage increase. And it's um recently enjoyed a lot of popularity, especially due to some of the political maneuverings that are happening. Uh with this recent stimulus relief um that's been going on at, at a national level. And, and for many on the left, this uh this proposal of a fifteen for an hour wage increase is, is scarcely sufficient. As it hardly keeps up with the increase of inflation. You're proposing a twenty-five dollar an hour increase for citizens at Minne- or citizens who live in, in Minneapolis. Can you talk about why and, and kind of what the, the thought process is that went into that?
Yeah, so actually, the twenty-five dollar minimum wage I'm proposing is an actual concession as well. You know, it should be more like thirty or thirty-five dollars an hour. But um, you know, you kind of need to sell people a little at a time, you know? The fight for fifteen was very good uh last decade, but.
We've been fighting it for a decade now. It was good last decade.
Exactly, so we, we need to have, like you said, something that keeps up with inflation, with rent and all of this, you know? Um the average rent is over fifteen hundred dollars in Minneapolis. So even at twenty-five dollars an hour and assuming like regular tax rate, it's still almost fifty percent of someone's income. For, you know, a single mother who needs a two-bedroom apartment complex or a single father, you know? So just for housing alone, twenty-five dollars an hour in Minneapolis is necessary. Um but also I really believe that people, you know, deserve to have leisure, you know, um enjoy things. And have their own space so that they can, you know, have their own autonomy and their own place to recharge. You know, I, I've got some friends living in Minneapolis in my neighborhood who have six roommates, you know, just to, just to live here. So twenty-five dollars an hour is, is a good start. But we need to, you know, kind of surpass that national conversation of fifteen. Um because minimum wage increased to seven twenty-five when I started working in two thousand nine. And it's the same nationally, or yeah, nationally. So fifteen dollars an hour is way far behind and they're, they were talking by twenty twenty-five. No, that's, that's a bunch of liberal um way to go about it, you know? Um we need to have it to twenty-five dollars an hour immediately. You know, we can't phase it in over time and over a bunch of years and slow it down. You know, people need help now.
Yeah, absolutely. Um well, let's talk a little bit about education. You're, you're a proponent, you're, you are a proponent of public education. Um yeah, what moves would you see as crucial, vital and necessary for improving the education system in Minneapolis?
Yeah, so I'll be one to admit that I am not proficient in all the, the different. Areas that involve a politician. So education is one of my weaker points. But I mean, some basic things like, you know, free food programs for all K through twelve students is, is essential, you know? Of course, that was popularized by the Black Panthers. Um so getting something like that, I have someone working on my campaign that is a teacher with special education. And they said, you know, the federal government promises about forty percent of their budget, but they actually only provide eight percent. So increasing funding to special education is important as well. Um opposing private schools um is something that's really important as well. And then increasing the LGBTQ plus educational curriculum is also important to me too. There, and I, I think the last thing that I, I really know about, that we need for schools. Are after-school programs being free so that they are accessible to people who want to attend them. You know, even myself growing up, I wasn't able to do all the after-school activities that I wanted to because of money, you know? Because of not being super wealthy and, you know, that could have kept me out of a little bit of trouble growing up. So it, it's, it's good for everyone to have these, these programs. Um because art is so important, science is so important, you know? It's important to, you know, kind of develop these things in the way the school system doesn't allow or give space to.
That makes perfect sense to me. Alright, well, listen, I'm gonna throw a, a couple yes or no questions at you. Is that alright?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, cool. So do you support legalizing marijuana?
Yes.
Do you support the decriminalization of possession of drugs?
Yes.
Should the records of all those incarcerated for non-violent drug charges be expunged?
Yes, and there should be reparations for those people that were incarcerated.
I'm here for a yes and. Let's fucking go. Uh do you support a person's right to get an abortion?
Of course.
Are you in favor of removing racist and colonialist statues and monuments?
One hundred percent.
Are trans rights human rights?
Yes.
Should all public transit be free?
Yes.
Do you oppose the line-three pipeline?
Yes, I, I really think Minneapolis can really flex its muscles as largest city in Minnesota, in Minnesota. To get the governor to stop that uh pipeline.
Do you support reparations?
Yes, and not defined by me as a white person, but you know, as the local black community.
Do you support the indigenous landback movement?
Yes.
Are you a proponent of universal healthcare?
Yes.
Does every human being have a right to a college education?
Yes.
Are you in favor of abolishing ICE?
Yes, one hundred percent.
And we've already established that you are an abolitionist and, and are a proponent of abolishing the police.
Yes.
Beautiful. Well, uh Stephen, I, I'll be honest with you. I mean, you've got a, a really great um platform. You've, you know, you've got uh a lot of great ideas here, um things that I, I share. But like many on the revolutionary left, I'm skeptical of campaigns and their promises. I think at their best, they can sketch out a hopeful new imaginary for people who are caught in the grip of what Mark Fisher calls capitalist realism. But on the other hand, they can also leave folks really disappointed when those promises do not come to bear. Even if their chosen representative gets elected. And, and as I've said, I think I find it really laudable that you've kind of laid out like, hey, these are the obstacles to, to me actually achieving some of these things. But how would you plan to actively follow through with these positions? Were you to, to, you know, gain the seat in Ward Ten?
Yeah, so to speak about um your first comment, I really believe in a diversity of tactics. So if we can use electoral politics to either heighten the contradictions or actually enact change, you know, I'll, I'll see that as a win. You know, and like you, you mentioned with the decriminalizing possession of drugs, I mean, Oregon State passed that. Um and I don't know if you saw recently, but like the Democratic Socialist took over the state party in Nevada. So both are examples of progress, you know? And at the, the worst, it's kind of some harm reduction. But to talk about how we can kind of get these things accomplished, you know, I'm, I'm running as a, a, you know, quote democratic socialist. In my ward, but there's also some outright socialists and democratic socialists running in three other wards. And one potential one so far. So, you know, it's gonna be a nice small block of, you know, socialists that are gonna be potentially in the city council. And at that point, you know, we can put pressure on the other councilors who are progressives, you know? And they'll, they'll probably side with us, but also, you know, we can have their constituents really, you know, tell them. Hey, we want this twenty-five dollar an hour minimum wage, for example, because we need it, you know? So city councilors are supposed to vote in favor of their, their ward and their constituency. But if not, you know, luckily, there is another election in twenty twenty-three. So if we get four of us in as socialists, we can continue building that momentum. And, you know, move this city at least further to the left and have a more militant city council. Um to, to, for both in labor organizing, but also just with regular workers.
So, so what does compromise look like to you, Stephen? I know politicians are, of course, required to make concessions quite often. Um and it sounds like many of the current uh members sitting on city council have made uh certain concessions. About what it actually means to dismantle the police. And so I, I, I'm, I'm curious, like, what are some examples of things that you'd be willing to compromise on? Versus things that you'd be unwilling to give any ground on?
Hmm, that's a, that's a really good question, actually. And I think the problem with progressives that are in politics or, you know, a lot of social democrats. Is they start off already trying to come and negotiate and compromise and they don't have strong stances and very far-left stances. So for something like twenty-five dollar minimum wage, you know, I don't really want to compromise, you know? Because twenty-five is already a compromise, you know, it should be more. I, I guess compromising with abolishing the police, um. I don't, I don't really see that there is a, a compromise for these things. Because my role as a city councillor or someone that's in the city council would be to have a strong stance. You know, I don't need to compromise. I can vote no on their progress, their progressive stances or, you know, policies. Because we have to have that discourse to continue to, you know, bring the conversation to the left. You know, if I, if I compromise too much, it's gonna allow them the floor to really speak about their. And pass their liberal policies and that's not something we want. I'm, I'm in the city council as a socialist to stand up for socialist policies.
Yeah. No, that's, that's, that's fair. I think that that uh, that, that, that's a, that's a good answer. Um it's a sort of answer I'd want to hear. Um I, I'm, I'm, I'm curious though, you know, obviously, um you and I ha- have uh shared critiques. Of um electoralism uh in, in the past. And I know uh that I for one have like more than a few critiques of representative democracy, right? The type of democracy where you elect a representative official and then they make decisions on your behalf. Um but I'm curious why you think that you're the right person to represent the city of Minneapolis? A city that has only recently been engaged in a historical struggle against police and for black liberation. Um I think that, you know, we live in an era uh where uh liberal identity politics are weaponized. And um the thing, the really legitimate types of identity politics around anti-racism, around um abolitionist organizing. And so I'm curious, um you know, you touched on it a little bit before about how um maybe some of these uh ideas are more palatable. Coming from a, a white dude sitting on city council, um and that, that they can be mainlined in that way. Um but how do you see yourself um as being representative of your district? Um and moreover, um I guess the harder question is, how do you intend to avoid um falling into some of the pitfalls? Of being like a white savior, for example?
Those are really good questions and actually I, I do get asked those a lot. And I do think representation is super, super important. But um it's not the end-all be-all, you know, like you need to have class, class consciousness. You know, you need to um have a platform that represents working-class people, you know? So that's kind of where I'm coming in is I don't necessarily even need to be the candidate. But as long as these material beneficial policies are coming through to help out the people, that's all I really care about. Yeah, I, I, I'm not trying to be a, a white, white savior in any sense. Um but I do have a lot of people that like my platform or like my policies. So I, I really just want to be the voice of my ward and for the city, you know? Um and if I get elected, you know, that, that means that, you know, the people of the city wanted to see someone with my platform. Get in regardless of me being a cis white dude.
Totally. Well, listen, uh I just kind of want to ask you point blank, like, do you want to get elected? Or is this more, more about popularizing these ideas in order to like move the conversation leftward? Is, is, is election something that you genuinely want to see happen? Um or, or, or could, could you actually see happen, you know, in a, 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 a city that is, you know? Admittedly progressive, but, but also are they, are they ready for, are they ready for democratic socialism? Are they ready for Stephen Fritsch? Like, you know, these are questions that I'm curious about. Is, i- is it something that, you know, you're genuinely like excited about the potential of getting elected and that's something that you really want? Or is it that you like just really want to popularize these particular positions? And, and, and give them a moment to shine in the light, to change the conversation, to um inspire people's collective political imaginations?
Yeah, I think it is important to, you know, bring up all these conversations, but also to make sure that people are held accountable. So the only reason I would like to be elected is to make sure that these things I'm promoting actually happen and are talked about and voted on. In the city level. Um if I don't win, I'm, and even if I do win, I'm still gonna work on class struggle. You know, I'm still gonna work on organizing with my community and connecting people for autonomous movements. That are gonna be happening over the summer. Um so, yeah, I guess I would like to get in, but it's not gonna be the end of the world and the end of my, my work either way.
Right on. I guess I kind of want to close by asking you, what change do you most hope to see? In the city of Minneapolis in the weeks, months and years ahead?
So I, I often think about that Angela Davis quote where she talks about having people that are physically able to wage a revolution. So the number one thing I think that I would be able to do as a city councillor would increase minimum wage to twenty-five dollars an hour. So people could have a little bit of room to breathe and not be struggling from paycheck to paycheck. Um I think that would be the, the one thing I would want to see done at the city level.
Most of all, right on. Awesome. Well, Stephen, thank you so much for joining me today. Before we part ways, can you tell listeners where they can go to follow you online and what they can do to support you and your campaign?
Yeah, so um I have a campaign website and it's stevenforwardten.com. And it's one zero for the ten. And then I'm also on Twitter um at Stephen4Ward10 as well. And, you know, donations are always helpful, but, you know, I acknowledge that people are working class and everyone's kind of struggling. So only if you have the means and also volunteers too, you know? We're, we're doing phone banking and text banking and you don't even necessarily need to live in the city or the state to help out with that. So, you know, just reach out through the website and, you know, I'm the one who's reading all the, the emails and the social media stuff. So um I'll be in direct contact with you if you reach out.
Beautiful. Awesome, Stephen. Well, thank you so much, comrade solidarity and, and best of luck with all of this.
Thanks so much for having me.
And that about does it for this week's episode of Coffee with Comrades. This is an entirely DIY show run by workers for workers. If you like what you hear, you can follow us on Twitter at Coffee W Comrades and Instagram at Coffee with Comrades. Check out our website, www.coffeewithcomrades.com and sign up to support our work with a monthly contribution. By going to www.patreon.com/coffeewithcomrades. You can find Coffee with Comrades on Apple Podcasts, Spotify, Google Play, wherever you go to get your anti-capitalist propaganda. Be sure to subscribe so you never miss an episode. While you're there smashing that subscribe button, be sure to rate and review the show as well to help us increase our reach. If you have feedback, criticism, or you'd just like to get in touch with us, shoot us an email at coffeewithcomrades@gmail.com. Until next time, stay wild out there, comrades. Until next time, stay wild out there, comrades. For now, I want to formally welcome my good friend and comrade Stephen Fritsch onto, is this Stephen Fricker or is it Stephen Fritsch?
Fritsch, yeah.
I want to welcome my, see, my good friend and comrade and then I fucking butcher your last name. That's how good of a comrade you are.
I mean, we never did, uh, we never really did last names, um.
No, we didn't. That's right.